It gives me, it has to get a like one that is.
You're a good man.
I didn't know there was a pause.
First of all.
We call the Mammell City Council meeting to order. The first order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance. I've asked Alderman Vapurzand to lead us in that. If you'd all please rise.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we love you. Thank you for just a beautiful day, this time of year that we enjoy so very much for our city and for the protection, the things that you provided for us. Lord, we had nothing to do but just to give you thanks today. While there are so many needs from difficulties and weather patterns in our nation and people who are suffering, we're a very, very blessed people. So we ask you today for protection, continued safety for our military who have put their lives on the line to offer that to us, these freedoms. Bless the decisions made here tonight. May they honor you. May the things that we say, may they reflect your goodness to us. In Jesus's name, we ask it. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, under special guests and announcements, we will have Alderman Vapurzand introduce the people that are here tonight and introduce the project.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. About 10 months ago, end of last year, Mr. Holloway, Eric Holloway of Holloway Engineering, gave me a call. As many of you are well aware, our Mammell Forward talks a great deal about a lot of things. One of the things talks about the northern end, possible annexation, and then a lot of things going on at the north end. Horizon One, as the Morgan districters refer to in our strategic plan, offers us the opportunity, as is in our strategic plan, $3.7 million of net profit annually to our budget. When I first became an Alderman, I went with Ms. Hoag, Alderman Hoag and Ms. Keller, and took me over there to the northern end of town, just showed me all around, some of the properties there that are undeveloped, and they're undeveloped for a good reason because we don't have sewer there. Matter of fact, Bass Pro came and even looked at that area. They chose down at the corner there, 430 and 30. But because we don't have sewer here, it's not shovel-ready. It's not a desirable piece of property yet. If we were to do that, it would cost us several million dollars to have that installed. So Eric and I began talking, and Jim Neri was heavily involved from the onset. And so in March of this year, we got together with the stakeholders from the northern end of town, people who are in Mammell and people who are not in Mammell, and we met with them at the Holiday Inn, and we had a meeting. Then we came here the end of March, and we had a discovery meeting in which the mayor attended and several other city officials attended. We just kind of talked about what we could do, the beautification of the Mammell Gateway, the northern part that's not really Mammell yet, and some promises that were made by former administrations that have not yet been met. And so we talked about a number of things. Of course, sewer was the number one thing. If we're going to do anything, we need to provide sewer. And there are a lot of undeveloped properties there that can't be developed until they get those things. So we began to have those meetings. We've had a couple of meetings since then. And heavily involved from Central Arkansas Planning and Development is Ms. Leanne Poole. Ms. Toney's with her. And she is an official grant writer, and she bats a thousand. So she's very, very good at what she does. But between Mr. Neri and Mr. Holloway, myself and Ms. Poole, a lot of work, a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of hours have been spent in this. And for most of you, I don't think that you know exactly what's been going on, but we're at a point now that you need to know what's going on because pretty soon it's going to come before the quorum court. We've already met with Judge Hyde, the mayor, and us met with Judge Hyde, and we have his support. So it's going to go before them, and then it will have to come before us. But I'm going to let Ms. Poole tell you the details about it, and you can ask her all the questions as well as Mr. Neri and Mr. Holloway because they have all the information, a wealth of knowledge. And so Ms. Poole, who gets paid to speak publicly, is here. And from Central Arkansas Planning and Development, Ms. Leanne Poole.
He laughed because he said he got paid to speak publicly, but he doesn't know that I'm a gospel singer, so I get paid too. But in my job at Central Arkansas Planning and Development, we have worked with Mammell for many years. But one of the challenges that Jim brought to me was this area on the map of Mammell, Pulaski County. And he said, "I need sewer out here. Have you got a grant?" And I said, "Well, actually, I might can help you because Arkansas Natural Resource Commission has community development block grant funds for communities that are a 51% low to moderate income." So the first step of this process was to have Eric map out the space, or the properties, the homeowners, the whatever it is that we were going to use these grant funds for, and conduct a LMI survey. We call it LMI, Low to Moderate Income Survey. And we charged the community with doing that survey themselves. As of today, we are at 54% low to moderate income, which makes us eligible to apply for these grant funds. So that being said, the next step would be for us to tally this information, provide it to Eric, our engineer, and he will apply to the Water, Wastewater Advisory Commission, who will then advise us where we need to get our funds from. Obviously, we're going to go for the grant money, and this is how it makes us eligible to do that. So he'll be applying for that, and then the deadline for the, I'll say, ANRC, Arkansas Natural Resource Commission, grant is in April. Now, we won't get notified until probably this time next year if we actually are approved for that grant. So with that being said, Eric, if you will come up here and maybe explain the area that we're looking at and what type of system, and maybe who's going to be treating it, and things like that, and then we'll tag team questions.
Good evening. And I'll be very brief, actually. Alderman Vapurzand covered most of what I was going to say. I don't know if you guys can see this map or if everybody in the back can see, but it's basically the residential section of the Morgan-Mammell area. As you leave the city, before you turn east to go towards the commercial areas right along the interchange, there's quite a bit, and that encompasses about 400 acres. It's about 220 homes that we're trying to serve. And as you know now, we had a 54%. And there's a lot of that that's, we weren't able to reach the people that were there, and that counted against us. So I think the number is actually probably 60, 65% of people that would actually qualify in that area. And so we're moving forward. Now with this news we got today of meeting that qualification, that's when my real work begins. I haven't really started the engineering. I didn't want to waste my time and find out that we didn't qualify. So we're about to really get started. So over the next three or four months, we'll work up several alternate designs and try to work with North Rock Wastewater, who would eventually accept this system. And we've talked to them primarily, and they've said that they will take it, and they do want to see this happen. So they're very supportive. I think the only other thing that I can think of that we might need to inform you is that you will eventually, given that a lot of this land is outside the city of Mammell, we've informed a lot of the citizens that we're not forcing annexation. We're just going out to try to bring them a needed service. And for the people that live in those areas that are dealing with dilapidated septic tanks or maybe have raw sewage on the ground, this is a very needed thing. So we're able to serve these people with something that's dire to them, and then also help the city by getting a needed infrastructure to an area where we can get some economic resource. So I feel like it's a positive thing for the city, a positive thing for those people. Majority of them live in the county. The mayor and Mr. Neri, Mr. Vapurzand, and I went and met with the county. We've had some preliminary discussions with them. There's going to have to be a memorandum of understanding. I think that's the term, to make this work, but they seem very receptive to that as well. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Alderman Saunders.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Holloway, I do have a couple of questions for you. First of all, is this in our extraterritorial zone?
Yes.
Okay, it is. Second question, will the grant that you apply for cover 100% of the cost of installing this system?
No, but I'll let Ms. Poole answer that part of that question because I'm a little unfamiliar exactly what the commitment from the city will be, but it's a small measure of what the overall cost would be. I mean, it's a very small amount, and she'll explain that. Back to your other question real quick, though. I've looked at it this morning. I think there's about 2,100 acres in the north Mammell area that if we get this sewer across the tracks and into that area that we could actually serve in a basin that's there eventually with gravity lines. And a lot of that is down 365, but it's a pretty significant commercial quarter, or at least 25% of that would be commercial. So, or at least I would think that, so.
Well, now, we're talking about sewer here, and just as an offshoot question, is this area, the colored areas, are they serviced by Central Arkansas Water?
They are.
They are? Okay. So they would be compatible with us if we ever did?
Yes.
NX. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll let her answer, though.
ANRC requires the entity to take on a percentage of a loan. It's usually very small, based on your current rate. I can't tell you what that's going to be because it's a floating scale and they calculate all that, but it is a debt repayment that's built into the water bills, and that's how that's repaid. But yes, they do require.
What's a percentage that you're familiar with that people have? Last one was?
I don't even get, that's way out of my wheelhouse.
I thought we mentioned less than 10%, 5%, things like that you'd seen.
It's very, it's, yes, it's a small percentage, but again, it's based on your current rate. And I don't know what your rate is right now, and we'll start calculating all that stuff, and we'll have more information later. But there was no need to start an application process, not knowing if we even qualified. So we'll have more information later. We'll let you know before everything is nailed down.
Okay. Now, you're talking about the rate. You're talking about the rate that's charged to the people in that area. It wouldn't come back to me, would it, or the citizens of Mammell?
Typically, no. Typically, it is the area that, the new area that is the extension.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for me?
No.
Alderman Timmons.
Saunders covered a lot of mine. I was wondering, was there a match on the grant?
Not like your typical grants where it's 50/50 or 75/75.
But they're, they're some.
Well, just that long.
Alderman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this question's probably for Mr. Holloway. Was there any contact with North Little Rock Waste Management, and are they in on the kind of the initial?
Absolutely. I mean, this can't be done without their.
You might have said that, and I just missed.
No, that's okay. They can't be done without their acceptance.
Right, right.
I have met with them and discussed several different alternatives for serving this area, and they're on board and going to be a part of that approval process. So before we ever submit anything, it's going to be something they agree with.
So they're part of that whole process that won't be another, like, once we get it?
There's no mandate for that, but we're including them just because it would be silly to move forward without their acceptance.
Thank you.
Eric, isn't there a possibility that a pump station would be deleted as part of North Rock Wastewater system?
We need to put one on service, and then to do so, we need to delete one, and that makes it, you know, something that is more amenable to them if they're able to do so. So if we're not able to do that, we're going to have a little bit of trouble, I think, with them. But we'll see how it goes.
I was going to say, the less pump stations they.
Right.
Thank you.
Alderman Mosley.
The colored areas are primarily residential, and I'm assuming that's the main thrust of this project is residential. And is there a way for, say, if somebody wanted to locate on the Brown property, they could tie in?
This particular grant is to serve residents. And as part of this grant, we also offer assistance for actually hooking into the water line. If it's approved, they build that in by the percentage, and we take the water line from the main line to the house. We are working, looking at some additional grant funding. Nothing is solid. We've still got a lot of work to do that deals strictly with economic development with the businesses. So this was the first, you know, you have residential between Mammell and then your businesses, but now we're going to be looking at some other grant funds that maybe can help bring it on down to the interstate.
Okay. So this is kind of like a step one or?
Yes, yes.
If I may just add to that, so you'll know, even though where we're serving is most of the residential area, right now, we have a commitment from the Brown family to provide land for a pump station, if that's the alternative we go with. It might be fairly expensive to try to get that from somebody that hasn't provided that. So, you know, I think our hope is that we would put in the pump station and sewer infrastructure, run it to the residential, but it would be there to be able to be tied in for any commercial that would happen there on that property.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Poole or Mr. Holloway? Okay. Now, we appreciate y'all coming out and explaining the process, and we know that this is, you know, step, you know, five or six of 20 or 30 steps or whatever. So you'll be back before April so that we make sure we can get the deadline in April of next year. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of the minutes of the October 3 regular meeting.
Go move.
Second.
A motion, second, to approve the minutes of the October 3 meeting. Is there any discussion on that motion? Alderman Mosley.
Yeah, I was reading through the appointment notes as far as the, for the city clerk, and I was wondering if maybe we could just get that first ballot inserted in there, how the vote came out on the first ballot to indicate there was a first ballot and then a second ballot. Because this one just talks about.
Okay, okay. Yes, sir.
Final ballot.
Okay, so I guess we need a motion.
Motion to amend and place that first order of ballot in there.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Okay, all right. So the motion has been amended to include the statement about the first vote in the ballots for the city clerk treasurer appointment, and we'll get that added. Is there any other discussion or additions or deletions? If not, all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. I had a public comment card. It was Mr. Ralph Kearney, but when I gave him a copy of the salary, or the salary, the speed study that is at all y'all's desk, he said it wasn't right. So he said he'd be back. He'd take him off the list. So, but we are, you know, that is not directly in front of his house near Nicholas. It was between Arnold Palmer and Trevino, and he says they don't speed down there. So we're going to do another speed study closer to Nicholas. I'd actually already, there was some confusion on where they were supposed to put the speed study, so we're already planning to do another one anyway. It'll be closer to this house. So hopefully, we'll have it by the next council meeting. Next item is a financial statement review. We do that at this meeting, and we have Ms. Tasha Thompson back with us tonight and also Ms. Carolyn Corti, so I don't know who's going to do the presentation. They didn't. All right. I know Carolyn was up here working on it this weekend, and we do apologize with the transition and learning curve and all that. It was this afternoon before we were able to send it out to y'all. But it was not because of lack of effort and lack of trying. I can tell you that. Ms. Corti was up here all weekend trying to work on it, so, yeah.
Well, it has only been two weeks since I started, so I hope that y'all are satisfied with that. There are a couple of things. Y'all have the PowerPoint presentation, and basically, when I was reviewing the budget, all your fund balances look really good. Y'all have a healthy fund balance. And I just used Tasha's format to put this year's, this month's numbers in. So basically, you can just see what changed from last, your fund balance went up on everything, I think. So I don't really have any comments about the statements, if y'all had any questions about them. I do have a couple of items that I will mention to you. Mr. Mayor, I think you asked about the, or you mentioned about the sales tax, and that is just posted under the wrong income.
Okay. You're talking about on street?
Yes. It's posted in the state turnback.
Okay.
So it was included on the wrong line item, so we'll get that corrected.
Okay. Under street, she's talking about, under the street aid program, it shows it to be deficient a little bit based on the budget and shows it being lower than last year, but it just got put on the wrong line items. That's what she's saying there, so.
Does anyone have questions about it, comments, need any additional information?
Alderman Mosley.
Yes, I'm just curious how the audit's going.
Okay.
And whether that's going to impact our ability to do a budget this year.
Yeah, I know. We're still working on the audit, and this time, it was my fault. I had to do the budget for where I work now, so I didn't have time to work on it. So that's what we're doing now, trying to get the last few adjustments that he asked me about the last time he reviewed it, get those back to them so that they can review it and give us a final conclusion on the audit. So the plan is to be able to present it at the November 7 council meeting. Yeah, that's what we're, so there's no, like, a whole lot of, like, general interest or anything like that that needs to be made. Those have already been completed. It's just us trying to finalize the report after those pension changes that we had.
Okay, so we do have the pension numbers all in?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's really ugly, too, but yeah, we do have. Because, see, the way they've asked us to present it now is that they want you to include all of the liability related to the pension, even though you may not, you know, have to pay that liability out in the next 12 months. But they want it to be more transparent. And, you know, that came along with the things that happened in Detroit and things of that nature. So they just wanted it to be more transparent about how we present the pensions. So as a result, our liabilities increased by 2.9 million in the general fund to account for the police fire pension and the APRA's pension. And that's just our portion of the unfunded exerial liability related to those pensions. The issue is, is that a lot of our cities are having, you know, healthy cities like us who have not missed any payments into life fee, we're still having to record the expense that's related to how many employees we have on, that's a part of the pension, even though we've already paid all of our required exerial payments. But the exerial is looking at the fact that, okay, you have participants in the plan, and we have to pay out the plan until all the participants die. So what is the liability associated with that complete cost? Well, because of that, then you need to take on some of this liability. And so our portion is approximately 2.9 million. That our liability increases, so our fund balance decreases. But that's just on the government-wide financial statements. It doesn't show up in your governmental financial statements that you see on a monthly basis.
Okay.
So it's only for reporting purposes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Alderman Anderson.
Thank you. So that's a lifetime liability?
But it's going to change each, each, each.
Each time we add employees?
Each time we add employees, each time we do the financial report every year. Yes, yes, as, as the liability.
That 2 million's more of a lifetime of the whole pension?
Right, exactly. Exactly. It is. It is. It's not like for a 12-month expense or a 12-month liability. No, it's more toward the future. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
There's not any other questions on the financials? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
A motion, second, to approve the financials for September. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is tree board appointment. Ms. Barbara Baker has applied to be on the tree board. We have right now currently two vacancies on that tree board, as I understand it, and I believe Ms. Baker's in the audience tonight. And so she, if y'all want to hear from her, I'm sure she'd be happy to tell you a little bit about herself, or is that what y'all desire? Okay. Ms. Baker, if you'd come up and state your name and address for the record, please, and then just tell them a little bit about yourself in your own words, and then why you want to serve on the tree board.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Barbara Baker. I've been a master gardener for about six years. I started as a master gardener in Missouri. When we moved to Mammell, I found I could transfer with a few additional courses. But my main interest was trees. They add a great quality of life. Mammell is a tree city, takes good care of trees. Trees are a long, you know, they're a plant for the future. So I enjoyed living here, and I've been to the tree board meetings two or three times because we work with them for Arbor Day. And so I learned about the vacancy, and I got my stuff together, and here I am.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Baker? Alderman Saunders.
Thank you, Mayor. Barbara, I know you by name. My wife is BJ.
I know BJ.
Yeah. So thank you for what you do for our city. You know, the master gardeners here take care of areas for us, most particularly in front of the community center. And they volunteer their time and keep all those beds up, and it's a lot of work.
Right. I think we're going to work closely with the tree board, too, and, you know, widen out a little bit.
Well, from what I've heard, you'll do a good job.
Thank you very much.
So.
Thank you, everybody.
Motion to approve Ms. Baker to the tree board.
Second.
A motion, second, to appoint Ms. Baker to the tree board. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is a procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor that we read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight.
So move.
Do you hear a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second, to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Next item is unfinished business. We have the third reading of ordinance number 913, amendment to the chapter 46 of the Mammell City Code. Clark Timmons, if you'd read that by title only.
Be it enacted, the city council, the city of Mammell, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, and ordinance being titled ordinance number 913, amending chapter 46 of the Mammell City Code.
This is on third reading. A motion is in order if the council so chooses. So move.
Second.
Motion to adopt.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 913. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Clark Timmons, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Holt.
Yes.
Alderman Vapurzand.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Williams. Alderman Mosley. Alderman Saunders.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is, under new business, we have the first reading of ordinance 915, to appoint commissioners to District 12. Clark Timmons, if you'd read that by title only.
Be it enacted by the city council of the city of Mammell, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 915, and ordinance to appoint municipal multi-purpose property owner, improvement district commissioners to municipal multi-purpose owners. Improvement district number 12 of Mammell, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Alderman Mosley.
I've just, I've got a few questions about this. Can you answer them, or is there a?
I don't see a representative, I don't see Mr. Menz in the office, audience. I might can try to answer them, or maybe Mr. Norris can answer some of them.
All right. First question is, what improvements were completed under this property owner's improvement district? Do we have some idea?
Well, the streets and drainage and water and sewer, it's what I understand was done. Now, I mean, I can't tell you exactly which ones for sure, but that's typically what's done on this type, and it was in phase one. So, because this was done in 2005.
All right. What would be their future responsibilities?
They would have to maintain the district until the bonds are paid off.
Okay. Are the streets and all that going to be? Okay. Are the streets and all that gonna be deeded over to the city or they...
They've already been dedicated over to the city. Yes, yes. But, they will have to repay the bond that was used to finance that, so...
All right. Thank you very much.
And I'll, I thought Mr. Minz would be here tonight. We'll reach out to him and see if we can have him here at the second or third meeting if there's, if y'all think that's the need, or the second or the third, but, yeah. Next item is Resolution 2016-28, supporting issue 3. Clark Timmons, if you'd read that by title only.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can you repeat that? I kinda got lost.
Okay. Read Resolution 2016-28, supporting issue 3, please.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Mammell, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2016-28. A resolution of the Mammell, Arkansas city council, supporting the passage of issue number 3, an amendment to the Arkansas constitution concerning job creations, job expansion, and economic development.
Okay. I brought this forward and asked the council to approve and support issue 3. And the Mammell area chamber of commerce, their board of directors is supporting this. And one of the things that I think's critical for us is that we have always had a partnership with Metro Little Rock Alliance. We've had a partnership with the Little Rock Chamber of Commerce and we've also had a partnership with the Mammell area chamber of commerce. Two, well, over two years ago, a lawsuit was filed against the cities of Little Rock and North Little Rock who contract out a lot of their services with the Little Rock Chamber and the North Little Rock Chamber. And the judge ruled that they could not have those contracts. And so, issue 3 is gonna clarify that and it would allow cities and counties to partner with the chamber of commercees in their area or other economic development agencies in their area to allow them to have a partnership and work together on economic development. And this is the only way that it looks like we're gonna be able to have a partnership. Now, we have Ms. Judy Keller, who's our economic development director, that does a lot of the work, but we still work closely with these other agencies. Metro Little Rock Alliance is a 12-county economic development agency and it's housed at the Little Rock Chamber of Commerce. But, the problem is, is Mammell, when we go to compete on a site selection or something like that, we're saying we're 17,000 people. But when we can bring Metro Little Rock Alliance with us and the entire 12-county area, we're bringing a million people, not just the 17,000. So, then we can compete with the Dallas's and the Nashville's and the Memphis when a project is looking here. One of the biggest reasons that we get looked at is because of the location of Interstate 40. You know, it's the lifeline going to the west coast and the east coast. And so, the, the site selectors are looking for locations close to I-40. That's one of the things that's always asked, is how close are you to an interstate system? And we're, our industrial park is one mile away. So, I mean, that earns a lot of points. The other thing that I think it's gonna do is it's gonna redefine how developments can be done. It's gonna change amendment 82 so that you can attract the large economic development projects. It's also gonna revise amendment 62 so that bonds can be retired based on this. And so, it's a win-win. And I was having a conversation today and I told someone, it's a rising tide rises all boats. So, if something good happens in the state of Arkansas, then Mammell benefits from it. Especially if it's in central Arkansas. We may land an auto part, or an auto plant in, let's say, south Little Rock, between Little Rock and Pine Bluff. But one of the suppliers, now, our industrial district doesn't allow for an auto plant. It's heavy manufacturing. So, we couldn't get them anyway. But, we might be able to get that supplier that's providing that part to that industrial, or to that industrial site, or to that auto manufacturer. So, or we may have someone in Mammell that gets a job because of it. I mean, they may work in that plant but live in Mammell. And so, that's where I think it's beneficial to us. This is, if you hear the ads, it's a job creation, but I think it's more than that. I think it's an economic development tool that the state of Arkansas needs to compete with the other states around us. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a complex issue and I have studied this issue 3 proposal. I've done a lot of research. And I'm gonna first back up to 2004. In 2004, Arkansas had a balanced budget amendment. Now, a balanced budget amendment is really a revenue stabilization act. That is all it is. It doesn't put any ceiling on the indebtedness of this state. Now, remember, if the state of Arkansas becomes indebted, it's you and I and all the other citizens that have to pay that off. Now, as a result of that, and there were some legislators that were pushing for big money. Okay, I could give you examples, not necessary. As a result, in 2004, they came up with, and the citizens voted in amendment 82. It limits, it limits the amount of debt that can be put on Arkansas citizens. And by the way, it's put on Mammell citizens too. Now, amendment 82 limits that debt to 5 percent. No more than 5 percent of the collected revenue from the prior physical year. No more than 5 percent of the collected revenue. Now, issue 3 reverses all that. What it does, it erases the 5 percent and allows the state and state legislators to end debt this state as much as they want to do. And the citizens are responsible for it. This is primarily proposed, or it was pushed initially by the state chamber of commerce. And of course, all chamber of commercees want to get into this. One reason is because they managed to put in this issue 3, there is, there's a special provision in there that allows cities to contribute to the chamber of commerce and other special interest groups in the interest of economic development. I would hold at that point that we shouldn't be allowing our taxpayer money or any city to go to private organizations, whether they're profit or nonprofit. Okay? Now, I'm not gonna continue on with this. I can tell you already, there is no way I could support something like this. I think we need constraints on our state government. We don't need to give them a signed blank check for whatever they want to spend, unlimited amounts. Look what's happened to other states, Michigan. Okay? Now, let me throw in a couple of other things. We have, this 5 percent, last physical year, 2015, 2016. 5 percent worked out to be $322 million that the legislature and the state can pay out for improvement or special needs to attract large-scale, very large businesses. That's 322 this year, million. In addition to that, we have a budget surplus every year. Last physical year, it was 122, 122.4 million dollars. We nearly always have a surplus budget, nearly always in Arkansas, it seems like. But, they don't tell you that the following year, they absorb virtually all that money and the state of Arkansas really doesn't have a reserve like we do here in Mammell. So, if we allow this through and, and it, I'm not talking about the current politicians, what about 10 years from now? We've got, this is a constitutional amendment. We could get a tax-and-spend kinda guy. He could run debts up in Arkansas and taxpayers are gonna be responsible for it. I can't support something like that. We have an economic development office in the city of Mammell. Okay? Now, let me give you two opinions. One is from UCA's Arkansas Center for Research and Economic Development. They say, quote, "It provides Arkansas officials an avenue to gamble limitlessly on economic development projects with the backing of the citizens of Arkansas." We're giving them a blank check. Two, it's called a conduit for action. Quote, "This is the most financially irresponsible constitutional amendment in Arkansas history." I think that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I, you covered it very well, Alderman Saunders. I appreciate it. I did some research myself and I'm not, I'm not comfortable supporting this. I don't think I would vote for it at the polls. My biggest concern is the unlimited, removing the 5 percent cap on this. And I read some information this afternoon that was put out by the Arkansas Agricultural Extension Service that put out some pros and cons and things like that. And there are just some things that I'm uncomfortable about that cap and then the allowing individuals and other entities to be, to receive funds or be given funds to do economic development. It just, I just don't like the way it sounds. It's too many red flags on this, so I'll be voting no.
But I think any project here is still vetted by this council and it comes before this council for approval for it. So, I mean, when you say we give it to private corporations or for them to do it, if this council chooses not to do that, you don't have to do that. You could put it into infrastructure such as sewer lines to serve an area out along the north end of town or you could build roadways in the industrial park, so... Alderman Vaperson?
If you think Ms. LeAnn Poole is doing what she's doing for free, you're mistaken. She's gonna help us realize 3.7 million dollars in annual net revenue if that's to go through eventually. She's not doing that for free. She's gotta be paid to do what she does. Would it be okay for us to hear from Ms. Keller on this? Would you care to speak on this? I'd like to hear somebody who has a little bit more knowledge than all of us put together on community development.
Well, I'm thrilled that you did research on it because you need to do that. I'm with the mayor, though, that think, I think this is a good thing for more reasons than the ones that the mayor mentioned too. Like Pine Bluff, the Jefferson County Alliance, they, after two attempts, they got an economic development sales tax. But when they went to use it, the wording in the constitution didn't allow them to use it. Now, most of those entities that help an industry coming in, they use it for infrastructure. So, if that deal falls through and they don't come through with what they said, then the infrastructure's still there for them to use for another project. So, I respect what both of your opinions, but I support the mayor's supporting this. I think it's a good thing for Arkansas. I think that legislatures don't always vote the way we want them to, but I think every project has to go to them for approval. So, that cap, I, we hope that they would be good stewards and they wouldn't overcommit the state. But, we're not competitive with other states, so, you know, I'm gonna vote for this. So, any specific question you have? I hope that helped a little bit. I really appreciate the fact that you did all that research, though. I think it's important that you all do that. But I think there's more to it than just what you said. And you read the people who were against it, but you didn't read any of the ones that were for it. So, I mean, there's two sides. There are just as many good points for it, so I'll be supporting it at the poll. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keller.
Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, gosh. I've got three responses here to three different individuals. I'll try not to do that. First of all, where Ms. Poole's money comes from? We had a budget surplus last year of 122.4 million dollars, okay, in collected revenues. Instead of spending that on pork barrel projects, maybe we could pay her salary out of that. One source. And there's other ways. Now, we can't lose sight of the main issue here and I will be voting against it.
I think we just did.
What?
Pork barrel issues.
Well, that is what a whole lot of this, this issue 3 could come to. Building bridges to nowhere for your buddies. We're giving them a blank check with no cap, no limit. And what we're doing here as a city in response to the mayor's, and I agree with the points that you made, but what we as a council are doing, and we're representing the city, is we're giving our endorsement to this. I personally can't give my endorsement to handing the state for the future, maybe for the next 40 years, 100 years. A blank check, an endorsement to spend all the money that they want to and call it economic development. I can give you examples. How about Mississippi County in 2013, I believe it was, when they wanted to put in a steel mill, another steel plant? By the way, there are already two there. They gave them 175 million dollars. And there was a big scandal over that because of some of the legislatures involved in it. It leads, it makes it too easy for the state of Arkansas and the legislatures to reward their buddies. Okay? That's my biggest concern and end debt the state and the citizens in the state. So, I can't give my endorsement to something like that. Okay?
Thank you, Alderman Saunders. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like to look at these kind of issues from both sides of the issue and weigh the pros and cons. And I really feel like there's more pros than there are cons. Now, Alderman Saunders brought up a very valid one. But, just because we take the cap away doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna start spending the next day. I mean, all of us live in a capitalist society where we are given credit in various forms. And some do well with that credit and have credit cards and they don't hold credit. They don't, you know, spend their max on their credit cards and some do. What we have to do, what I feel like on the positive other side of that is that we have to give the tools necessary to the people that are trying to bring these jobs to our area, that are trying to bring the economic development, not only for our city but for our central Arkansas area. Just like Mayor Watson said, you know, a rising tide will help us all. So, if we're able to have the ability, which we don't right now, to have a collective group that serves our interests, not only in the city but also in the central Arkansas area, then we need to have that tool in our toolbox. And we've got to put, now, I know this is hard to say in this current climate, but we've got to put some of our... We can't foresee everything that's gonna happen in the future. We've gotta put some, some credit to our legislature now and in the future that they're not gonna spend our grandchildren's money, not gonna spend our taxpayer money on pork barrel things in the future. That's why we have the system in place for legislature. You know, if we don't like what our legislature is doing, then we fire them and we elect another, another person to represent us because they're not representing what we want. So, we can't put a lot of these tools and caps on top of people for things that they may or may not do. And not give us the ability to grow and bring in big projects that we might have not had that chance to do because we capped ourselves or we've basically governed our economic development group. And then, that gives the advantage to Texas or it gives the advantage to Oklahoma or it gives the advantage to Missouri or even Louisiana. We've gotta be able to make sure that we give the tools to the people that, yes, that's their job is to bring in economic development, but we've gotta give them the right tools. If you ask a reporter to go report without giving him a pen or a paper or anything that he needs to write his notes, then he's not gonna be able to do his job. And that's the way I feel about this particular subject. So, I will support it. Thank you.
Alderman Vaperson?
I understand what you're saying, Alderman Saunders. I do think it can be misleading, though, when we make the same assumption that to remove a cap is to give a blank check. I think there are a lot of checks and balances and having been a little bit involved in the community development situation, I think it's important not to hamstring our people to be competitive. And if we can use outside entities to help us, our chamber, our chamber is huge with us. The bash on the boulevard is a big thing. It's a... It's a, we, we need all the help we can get for community development. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Vaporsan. Alderman Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This afternoon, I had called our attorney and asked several questions about several actions on the agenda tonight, and that certainly was one of them, because I did not understand the wherefore's of the entire Constitution. I feel like the other two, Alderman Saunders and Mosley, I, I'm not, I'm not big on amending a Constitution at all. If something like this comes along, it's a momentous decision, and I don't feel like that we can just flip and say, okay, well, let's vote for this. There's two, where did this come from? What, there's some kind of a basis of what this is. I would like to know more. I have some sources that I would like to be able to, to ask some questions, and come back and discuss it with a little bit more intelligence. I told Caleb this afternoon that I hate to just come in and just feel like a dummy, and not know, have any idea of what I'm talking about. So, I would like to make a motion to the council that we delay a vote on this until at least the, the next council meeting, or a date specific, and give us some time to consider, and let us all go about our business and do some research of our own. I was impressed with the presentation by Alderman Saunders, and it certainly is worth considering. And I don't think we can just walk in the door and say, okay, yeah, I'm going to vote yes.
This is on the ballot.
So, it'll, it'll be on the ballot, but I, I want to know enough so that I can be ready to vote, and we're asked to support it here tonight, and I'm not ready to support it here tonight. That's my point.
Well, if we wait till the next meeting, that's the day before the election, so I don't think there's any reason to defer it. Either vote it down or approve it. I would not delay it.
I would have.
Early voting starts on October the 24th.
Right. I would have to know.
Alderman Vaporsan?
Motion to approve Resolution 2016-28.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-28. Is there a discussion on that motion? All of us in favor, please signify by yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Could you?
Mr. Mayor?
Can we have a roll call?
Roll call vote.
Alderman Holt?
No.
Alderman Vaporsan?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
No.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
No.
Alderman Saunders?
No.
I'll vote yes. It's a four-four tie, so I'll vote yes. Next item is the mayor's comments. Just, I had a press release in here with the packet that Maumell was voted 2016 Volunteer Community of the Year, and so that award will be handed out at the Municipal League Conference in January. I was going to look, and I forgot. I mean, it's, this is about our fourth or fifth time in a row, and then it's like our 13th or 14th time to win it. So, you know, I, I think it's a testament to our citizens how much volunteer efforts they put in, and for the city. I mean, it ranges from youth sports, to the senior wellness center downstairs, to Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, and our youth council. That, the youth council got up and walked out while ago. They walked out because they have another meeting at 7:00. So, that's why they walked out of the room. I did want to note that, because it looked like they walked out while someone was speaking, and the only reason they left is they have their actual council meeting at 7:00. But, the, so, I mean, it's, and it's everything. It's the, it's the, what's Ms. Baker, Master Gardeners? I mean, it's their volunteer hours at the community center. So, it's a little bit of everything, and it's amazing that when you actually see the number of hours there to put down, and categorized, and given to the back to the community. And so, that's a testament to Maumell and our citizens. Next item is the 2017 budget. I decided not to do one this year. Oh, no.
Yay. I'll second that.
Yes, sir. Will you approve last year's budget?
I'll second that one.
Continuing resolution.
I didn't want to pass them out early. Y'all be flipping through them all during the meeting, so.
I assume it's balanced.
Oh, it is not balanced.
No, that's what we're, that's where we come in.
It is, if you look at it, your first reaction is, we're $2 million off. Well, it's, just like everything else, a lot of it's capital. There's 14, there's $1.4 million in capital. Several of them are at the request of the aldermen, so not at, the department heads provided what they were requested to do. But I also want you to look at something while you're looking at these budgets. Look at the projected revenue for the last five years, and then where it actually came in at. And then look at the projected expenses, and where they came in at. Because basically, you're going to see that the revenues were typically 300,000 below what we actually collected. The expenses were typically 500,000 below what we expected. That can be one vacancy, or a couple of vacancies in a department, or it could be, you know, we, we didn't spend as much on vehicle maintenance. I mean, I was looking at one today. Vehicle maintenance in our sanitation department, for example, we have like 225,000, or something like that, but we're right around 125 or 150 right now. So, I mean, that, that's part of it. I mean, you don't know on some of this stuff. The maintenance issues are the big issue there. So, when you look at it, it's like, the first thing you say is, man, this is terrible, but it's really not. I mean, if you, if you sit down and dig into a little bit, and I'm not saying we change what we do as far as forecasting, because I would rather under-budget and, and, and over-collect. I mean, that's, you know, I prefer to have a surplus, as Alderman Saunders referred to it earlier. But at the same time, it's a, it's a tool that we have to use. And then the same thing, I don't want to hamstring somebody that if we have a garbage truck go down, and it's going to be $20,000 to fix it, that, well, we can't fix it, because we have to go to the council to ask for additional funds. And so, that's what, I want you to look at those numbers, and just kind of look at everything. I'm not saying dig into every little item. If it's $500, and we, we spent 250, that's not the item you look at. You look at the items that are $100,000, and 125, and things like that, and just look at those. And then there's, there's a lot of personnel. There's increases. I mean, we'll, we'll talk about those. And then, Senior Wellness is opening up a new facility next year, so you're going to see an increase in the Senior Wellness budget. So, so that's some issues we need to look at and discuss, and as the department heads come in, you'll have a chance to talk to them, and, and see what their goals are, and why they've asked for something, and requested something. So, it's a, it's a working document. I will tell you that I found a mistake right after I printed that thing, because I, I've spent this weekend finalizing that budget, and so I found a mistake. So, I didn't fix it, because all 12 of them had already been printed, and it's, it's just noted on mine. So, Monday night, I may mention, here's a mistake. It's not a, it's not a dollar mistake. It's, it's a staffing mistake. So, it's not something that's going to address, or alarm anybody, or anything like that. But it's just, so I'll probably keep looking at it and find a few more mistakes in it. But, but right now, that's what we'll start with, and we'll go from there. We'll have the first two meetings, we'll have department heads there on October the 25th, and then November the 1st, which are Tuesday nights. And that's what your first sheets are there, that are describing who will be where, and so that way, you don't have to study the entire budget. You know, you can look at half of it for the first meeting, and the other half for the other meeting.
Our workshop sessions are at 6:00?
At 6:00, yes, sir. And...
Can I get you to send, I didn't print it out, my printer's down, and I didn't print out the schedule for, for budget meetings?
Okay, okay. I, I will, I will bring it, I'll have a copy for everybody at the next meeting that you can put in your book. How about that?
Okay.
Yeah.
But we're, you said we're meeting next Tuesday night?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But we don't have another meeting between now and then. Okay, so you'll bring it Tuesday?
Yes, I'll bring it Tuesday. That, the two meetings are listed right there, October the 21st and November the 1st. If you open the first page, yeah, I mean, that's your next two meetings right there. So, so that's what I'm saying. I'll bring a schedule then, with, there's two others, two others scheduled, and I think it's, November the 15th is the next one, I believe, and the next one is November the 29th, I believe. Now, that's, that's from memory, but that's what I'm remembering right now. But I'll have, I'll have a complete schedule for everybody at the, the budget meeting next Tuesday night, and I'll email you one, since you're not going to be there. And I may just email it out to everybody, and then, yeah, yeah, but I'll have a copy for anybody that wants one. And then the only other thing that I had was, you have that traffic study in front of you. You know, traffic studies are a very clear indicator of what's going on. It shows that 85% of the cars are driving 31 miles or less. Now, the street is a 25 mile an hour street, but we, we give people an allowance of 10 miles an hour on most areas, and things like that. So, that's one way to look at that document. If you look down at the very bottom down there, it talks about two different travel lanes, and then total is what that's showing you right there. But it tells you that the 85%iles 31, then it gives you the number of cars in those brackets as far as the speed. So, basically, it's giving you every five miles an hour, I think is what that one is, yes. So, it tells you that there was seven cars doing 1 to 5 miles an hour on combined, meaning both lanes. And then if you jump all the way over to 26 to 30, 5,372 cars were going in between 26 miles an hour and 30 miles an hour. So, and you look at, over here, and at 46 to 50, you see three vehicles, okay? Chief Williams has pointed that out before. It could be a police officer responding to a call at 2:00 in the morning, or something like that. So, I mean, don't, don't put a lot of thought into, well, why is someone going that fast, and all that? It very well could be that, responding to an emergency situation. It could be somebody driving that fast. We, we don't know for sure. It's, it's hard to say. That, that counter doesn't tell us who it was. It just tells us two wheels ran over this device. Actually, I guess four wheels, but, yeah. Could be a motorcycle, too, so. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, the, the percentage above the limit is 30, 3.5%, and that basically is, is the percentage of people that were traveling over 35 miles an hour. Is that correct?
That's 36 miles and up, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir. And I didn't total the number up, but you've got well over 10,000 cars. You can, you can add them all up if you want to, across that top line, and that would give you the total, but it's well over 10,000 cars. Okay, that's all I have. Planning Commission report will be at the next meeting. Alderman's comments? Alderman Vaporsan?
Quick things. The 31st, Monday night, Halloween night, is our annual truck or treat at the police and fire stations. We have blowups and a lot of candy and things like that, so bring the kids if y'all want to come out. That'd be fine. And then the second thing is, talked to City Attorney Norris, it was a year and a half ago, we introduced the code of ethics for, for our board, and now that we have two new aldermen, I plan on reintroducing that. I was going to do it in the beginning of the year, but because they're already seated, I thought we'd go ahead and do that now, or in the, in the near future. So, y'all supported it before, and I figured we'll, we'll just probably do the same thing, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Alderman Vaporsan for all of his work on the sewer-related project. I hadn't, had no idea you were doing all that, and a lot of effort there. You've held a lot of hands, made something happen. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Any update on the dedication of the new fire station?
We'll know after Wednesday, okay? I'll let you know, I'll, we'll send out an email. I'll let you know after Wednesday, hopefully. We had a meeting down there today. We just got one construction issue we're trying to work through.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. But if we do it on the, the date, we said, it was November the 6th, November the 6th, we'll make sure everybody gets an invitation to that, if, if we go ahead and proceed on with it.
All right. Thank you.
Well, I assume we'll get an invitation no matter what date it is?
No, only if it's going to be on the 6th. No, you will, you will. But it, but we'll make sure, since we won't have another council meeting before then, we'll make sure that we send out an invitation, and then hopefully a reminder also. Any other aldermen's comments? Mr. City Attorney?
No, sir.
Ms. City Clerk?
No, sir.
Do adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second? All of us in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.